You drug it out. Guys, good evening. I'd like to draw the meeting to order. One of our board members had a, unfortunately, had a family member pass away and she is on her way en route back home.
There she is.
And here she is. Here's our Wendy. So she will be zooming in. She'll be answering all of our questions, comments, everything. She'll be joining us through Zoom, just so that everybody understands. So we will jump right into Mr. Parker and awards and recognitions.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we are in the presence of greatness. And I know Tony Thomas is in the room, our architect, but Tony, we're not, we're not talking about you. Okay, so at this point, I'm sure our special guests need absolutely no introduction. We're joined tonight by the Kentucky High School Athletic Association Sweet 16 State Champions, the Grape Crossing High School Basketball Warhawks. Their list of accomplishments is incredibly long and seismic. Back-to-back 11th Region Champions, four-time 41st District Champions, Billy Hicks Classic Champions for three years running. It was their time. This was their year. And they are the first boys' basketball state champs in the history of Grape Crossing High School.
All right, as we always do, we always, we always like to present our, those people that we are celebrating with a, with a challenge coin. So when I call your name, would you please come forward? I've got a challenge coin for you. And if I'm not mistaken, I think this may be like a match instead. I don't, you all, I don't know, this might, you all might have like, I don't know, 10 of them at this point. But let's start. Congratulations to number zero sophomore LJ Holman. Senior Vince Dawson. Senior Ryan Payne. Junior Travante Cooper. Sophomore Graham Schwartz. Senior Jamari Mason. Senior Gage Richardson. Freshman Ozzy Ishmaul. Second A. Sophomore Jordan Kuntz. Sophomore No Day. Senior Javonte Dean. Senior Malachi Moreno. Freshman Colt Dylupo. And freshman Brady Oram. All right, so for my seniors, I guess the next time that, that we'll have a chance to see each other, we'll be shaking hands again at graduation day. This team has a lot, it's taken a lot of support to make this team be able to get there because there's a big supporting cast behind it. Administrators, teachers, coaches, and parents have been there every step of the way. And so tonight, we're going to honor and recognize the commitment and dedication of a few of the people that have helped make this all possible. I hope I've got everybody listed, so if, if I don't, someone please let me know because I don't want to leave, leave anybody off. But special thank, thank you to Special Assistant Thomas Baldridge. Manager Thomas Taylor. And your Brady Coutino. Manager Caleb Sanaman. Manager Connor Baldridge. Manager Kyra Dawson. Announcer Steve Maynard. Announcer Cass Clay. Bookkeeper Jamie Lee. Clockkeeper Joe Campbell. Clockkeeper Doug Jasper. Statistician Jason Taylor and Justin Harkey. Recruiters Morgan McDaniel and Bailey Reeser. And for the coaches, assistant coach Freddie McCoy. Like a team, like a team. Assistant Coach Vince Dawson. Assistant Coach Tamara Manning. Assistant Coach Eric Moore. Assistant Coach Dave Teehan. Head Coach Steve Page. And then I've got two more. Athletic Director Austin Haywood. And Principal Joy Lesby.
Please, please, please follow me.
We do for our banquet, we do host this act. We have 3.25, that's the conference. So we have like 35, 36 players, like 27.
Wow.
It is a legit BPA, not a, just, it's huge. So a senior is huge.
Sure. Well, hey, congratulations on a hard-fought season and, and the state title. That, it'll be something that you'll be able to look back on years from now. Nobody can take from you. You know, so congratulations. One more hand for our state champion.
Okay, well, congratulations and everybody is very, very, this community is very proud of you. And thank you for everything that you participate on and off the court. Thank you so much. Actually, guys, if you'd like to go ahead and go, you are welcome to. Unless you want to sit and join us for the rest of our meeting, you are more than welcome. I'll give you that choice, but thank you for joining us. Thank you. And those in the back of the room can move up to the front if you don't mind. We can't see you. I don't think they can hear us. Yeah. I'll wait there. Yeah. Okay, everybody in the back of the room, come on and move up so we can see you.
Please join us.
Please join us. Everybody move up, please. I guess we're hiding out in the back of the room. Okay.
Do what?
I just told everybody, move up here so we can see you. They're like way back there. Okay. All right, number four, agenda approval.
I so moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number five, we have public comment. Mike Davis, you're first up. Come join us. Oh, my gosh.
What would it be? Look, I'm old school, basically, probably a country boy can't survive, I reckon. So I mean, I'm not, you know, I mean, I could, I had to listen to that Drake and whatever else all that stuff is in the locker room enough as it is. So I mean, I probably, you know. So first of all, let me say, Wendy, I'm sorry to hear about what's going on with you and your thoughts and prayers, okay? I know last month I didn't speak, but I hope all of one of you got the thing I sent you also. Appreciate that very much. I thought that was the appropriate thing to do, but board members, Mr. Parker, all our community members. It was really great, first of all, to see them being honored. Yes, I happen to coach at the other side, but I can tell you right now, I had a great conversation with Joy the other day when I was in her building. And I was thoroughly impressed and thrilled for them that that happened and they're good people. Thank you once again for a chance to speak tonight. I come before you with all the pride and, but with also a lot of purpose. We just wrapped up our spring recruitment drive here in Scott County and I appreciate Mr. Parker, you know, allowing us to do that. And we've, we've been able through the spring to gain 60 more new members. That puts us as the fastest-growing local in the stier state of Kentucky. People are looking at what we're doing here. They want to be a part of it and that's not by accident. It's because of the culture we're building, the leadership we have, and the people who wake up every day and give their hearts to our kids. We're so proud of the work in partnership with you all and Mr. Parker to be able to make Scott County not just good, but great. A place where people want to live, want to work, and where every child gets a chance to thrive. Now, as all of y'all know, the time is harder. Allocations are wrapping up. The budget is being balanced. Pink slips are landing in people's laps and new positions are being posted as open. It's a reality in education in April and I do not take for granted the incredible difficult decisions that our principals have to make, that you have to make, and our superintendents and people in the district office have to make. It's not easy. You carry it with a heavy load, I'm sure. And, and I thank you for leading with your heart as much as you do with your head. But tonight, I wanted to talk to you about the people that are still here standing with us. The bus drivers, the cooks, the custodians, the aides, the secretaries, the counselors, and yes, the teachers. These are the people that are showing up, up every day, day after day, shaping the lives of our students. They are the ones who smile when our kids walk through the door and the ones that take them home and make sure they're delivered safely. They're the ones that take care of them whenever they've had a tough night at home. They're the ones that are quietly buying supplies out of their own pockets. They're the ones who lay, who stay late, come early, give hugs, give hope, give everything. That's what teachers do. And in return, they ask for very little, but right now, they're asking me to fight for them. Educators are leaving the profession in record numbers, not because it just, not because they don't love the work, but because either they can't afford it or they just have to make difficult choices amongst their family. They're choosing between, in all honesty, filling their fridge or filling their gas tank. Between paying the electric bill or buying their child a birthday gift. That is the world we're living in and we cannot afford to sit still and say that it's just a way of life. That it'll just, that in four years, it'll change. And I can't lead that way. We don't, we don't lead in fear. I don't believe in leading in fear. I believe in being strong and standing in the face of adversity. Because in Scott County, that's what we do. That's what I've been taught here since I've been here. We're the best at what we do and we need to continue to be that way. We have beautiful schools. Thanks to Dwayne, who I've heard has a different nickname now, thanks to Mr. Parker. And his team, our facilities shine. As a part of the athletic programs, people envy of what we got. We have state champions, which we just recognized, and we even have Wildcat legends choosing to coach our kids. And I like to say, congrats to Shawn Woods. Our community stepped up when we've needed them most, obviously passing the tax last year to help us move forward. And we've managed that money wisely and as a physically discovered person, I appreciate that. But it's time to be bold and I've come at you many times and I'm still going to continue to say, what we're asking for in a 5% raise for all employees, I want to make sure that it's clear. It's not just about the money. It's about sending the message. It's a message that Scott County leads. It's a message that stands up in the face of some of those in Frankfurt that don't agree with what we do in education. All right, it's the time to let them understand that we set the trend, we don't follow, and we're here to attract the best educators that can, that want to come here and keep the best educators that we have. I want to make sure that we, we don't just settle for emergency certifications, that we have, we only use them when it's necessary. We raise the bar for everybody. We don't just talk about what we value, we prove it. And if we can do this and step up now, it's hard telling where our district can go. I know for a fact that we've had many a principal who's had to make decisions between one candidate and only one candidate, or two candidates, and probably neither one were what they wanted. If we can do this, we will have eight, 10, 12 people applying for jobs because they want to come here because they've saw what we can do. And it makes a difference. You know, Frankfurt has forgotten us, but we haven't. Okay? And that's the main thing. We want, we value, we want to know that we're valued and we want you to have our backs, which we believe you do. Because Scott County, we hold the most precious responsibility a community can have, our children. And the people who care for them day in and day out deserve to be cared for in return. And I appreciate everything you've done since I've been involved with SCA and working with Mr. Parker and the board. You all have been amazing. Okay? And I, and I'm not here to say that you haven't done anything because I know you have. But as I wrote in the last, last month's report, I've, I've crunched a lot of numbers in my lifetime and I'm a pretty good numbers guy. And I would never ask you to do something that we're not able to do. I firmly believe that we can do this. I firmly believe we can stand for everybody to say what is going on in Scott County. And I want you to understand, I appreciate everything you've done for us. I don't want you to ever think that we're downplaying the stuff that you've done because we're not. But it's my job as, as the representative of the, of the people, the teachers and the cooks and the custodians and the bus drivers that I, that I serve, and I'm very happy about that, and the growth that we're growing is because of the fact they know they have someone here that has a very good transparency with our superintendent. They know that you all listen. They know that you all respond. And I appreciate that ability to be able to do that for them. So with, within closing, I just want you to know that there's great things going on all across this coun, this, this county. I've been in schools all, for the last couple of weeks. I attended a board meeting, not a board meeting, but a faculty meeting at Stamen Ground. They're all getting ready for testing. They're all excited. I, I don't think the state of Scott County schools could be any better as far as what we're building in our cultures. I happen to know of, I've heard of a, a couple of good hires that we've made. One of them, I think, is about as excellent as it comes. And we're, we're just, we're happy about what we're doing, you know, but we want to continue to push forward. We don't, we don't want to fall for behind. We want to go from the front. And I really believe that as you all look for this, I know we're getting closer to May. I, I hope that you will and I And I really believe that as you all look for this, I know we're getting closer to May, I, I hope that you will and I appreciate your all's time and thank you for your all's leadership, okay?
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I want to recognize you real quick, you know, a lot of my building needs here, okay?
The, the growth we've had has not been because of Mike Davis, okay? I have amazing people in my buildings that have worked very hard and are doing great things and they're great teachers too. So I wanted to know that it gets, I'm the one that gets to have the walk-up song, but I'm not the one that does work.
Well, thank you for joining us, I appreciate that, everybody, thank you. Andrew Burgoon, I hope I pronounced it correctly, okay, come on up. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
And what's your name? Nice to meet you, Grace.
Superintendent Parker and board members, like to thank you for hearing us here. Three years ago, almost to the day, this room was packed with teachers and I feel like in the last three years, the message has not only been received but acted upon. And the changes that the board has made with Superintendent Parker, I think have made a qualitative difference to the people who work here and also the potential people who work here. So I don't know the bird's eye view, I'm a, I'm a school teacher, I'm not a numbers guy, I'm a social studies teacher. But what I can see from my classroom is I can see high quality colleagues who are choosing to stay in Scott County. And I think that the work that you've done the last three years is a big part of that. High quality colleagues who are choosing to stay when they're eligible for retirement and those are some of the most high quality instructors we can have for our kids. We're even seeing some of the best leadership that has left in the last several years return. And that is, that's a very hopeful thing for me. I think it's important because I think in the last three years, you've been nimble and I, I know I work for the government and, but we do live in a free market system and we, we compete for the best in that free market system. So I think that we need to think about staying competitive in the future, staying nimble so that we can make sure that we have the best possible people in the schools with our kids. Two things I would, you know, besides seeing great teachers stay and, and people come back to Scott County the last three years. I'd also, things that I see in my building that I'd like to improve upon is the kitchen staff are absolutely amazing. And they do more than just serve food and I think that they, they deserve something that's maybe, you know, it's, it's not even fast food wages right now. And then also custodians, I can see in, in my building, the people who are full-time employees take great pride in it. The contractors that come in, I constantly get emails that say, hey, they called in sick or hey, they quit or whatever. So I think the contractor thing is not the solution, I think we need to get people in there who might have kids in the county and who care about the state of the, of the place, so those are just two things, that's, that's the view from the classroom. And again, I want to thank you for being, for being proactive in the last three years and I ask you to consider that in the future here as well, thank you.
All right, thank you both for joining us, thank you, Grace. Okay, number six, consent agenda items 6A through K.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, construction reports, Tony, come join us. Good evening.
I'm a little birdie that it's going to be blue and orange, maybe a darker blue that's on there, but you couldn't hardly see.
Was that birdie Al?
I'm sorry, oh, was it birdie, yes, that's right, that's right, a little, a little Al told me. A very wise Al. Got to stay good with Renee. So just a little walkthrough memory lane, we presented the renderings of the project, here's the front of the school, there's the parent pickup line around to the side. Nothing's changed with the floor plan, the last time we talked about how we made the storm shelter a little bit bigger, but you know, all the amenities for the 600 student school. And of course, here's an interior rendering and these are things that you've already seen and just a diagram of the site. The upper left corner is of course where the entry would be for Cynthiane Road, Highway 62.
What is a retention area?
A retention area is where stormwater will go and slow down its rate of flow before it leaves the site. Local codes, well, and it's all over America and the world now that they require a lot of stormwater retention. And in some cases, it's underground and it's a little, little bit less expensive if you can actually just kind of dig a big hole. There's one at the Scott County High School too, you try to put a little bit more out of the way if you can, but that's what it does, it slows down the rate of, of the storm flow water off the site. You know, so it doesn't flood somebody downstream is, is the idea. Because when you put in, and it's a good question, because when you put in a lot of hard surfaces like the roof and the parking lot and things like that, all of a sudden the rain hits the ground and it, it doesn't, it doesn't soak up for a while, it hits the storm drain quick. And that's why there's so much flash flooding these days because a lot of stormwater can't handle it. And there's a lot of hard surfaces, so that's the area for the retention basin, which is very close to where there's kind of a depression already. So we tried to take advantage of, of what is there already on the site. And just a quick recap of reminding the school with the bus lane, the car lane, looks like 270 spaces in the service dock around the back. And now they are moving ground, this is the picture from the road, you can see some equipment there at the front, not that they're doing much work there. A nice little spot to stop and take a break if you need to. And erosion control in, trees have been knocked down, the owner did some of the, the tree removal. You can see the top soils being stripped, markers, grade markers in place. Bulldozer, couple of bulldozers going all day, every day, pushing top soil around. Just another picture of the bulldozers, so. Oh, I meant to say we had a pre-construction last, Monday last week, so on the 14th, got everything going, the contracts are signed, you all approved. If you remember at the board meeting, they approved all the contracts, so administratively, everything's going, the design team has already reviewed a lot of shop drawings and processed them and put them back. All while the contractor's already on site, knowing how quick of a schedule it is, pushing a lot of dirt around. Did run into a couple of sinkholes, but these are not big, not anything like we had at Great Crossing, but those are things that have to be addressed. They'll have to, they'll have to dig those out and fill them with some rock filters. Especially one that's kind of right under the center of the building, but that'll be monitored and filled in and taken care of. And then just you can see how much earthwork they've done around there, just an incredible amount of earthwork. And other than showing you another 100 pictures of dirt, I don't really have anything else. Oh, well, there was one, see, there's one, see, there's one in the background there, yeah. Yeah, 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 I'll try to keep showing those barns. So unless there's any questions for Oxford, that is the report for this evening.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Number eight, student achievement reports. Welcome and thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
So today we are going to give an update on our career and technical education programs. And I know often we see John Noel as the principal of ECS, but he has another title. He coordinates all of our CTE programs in all of our schools and so, so take that lens, ECS principal off and he's here today as our CTE coordinator, so.
Yeah, yeah, again, my, my name is John Noel and I'm a very proud CTE coordinator and there's a lot of great things going on, so let's start with the, I guess I'm in control here.
You're in control.
All right, we'll start just with some numbers here, CTE by the numbers for Scott County schools. Currently, we have 21 CTE programs with 37 different pathways. So for example, within ag is a program and then there might be four pathways under that that students can choose from. There are the numbers there, the second line has the number of students in each school that is taking a CTE program or in a pathway. 447 students last year earned an industry certification, that's typically seniors, but it can be a junior. And that's last year's numbers because students this year are still taking industry certifications. 239 students pass the end of program assessment, so similar to earning an industry certification, some of our programs through KDE have an end of program assessment, so it's kind of like a final to see what those students have learned within that pathway. 21 or 20 plus dual credit CTE classes are currently being offered across the district and 84 students are participating in paid co-op opportunities. And those students will have to work 300 hours, it's typically about 15 hours per week and they are learning things within their pathway class that relate directly to the job that they have. So that can be anything from a fact student working at a restaurant for food service to a nursing student working at UK and we have some nursing students who are making up to $18 an hour for their co-op opportunities. So on some of these here, you'll see PR there, so that is post-secondary readiness. And so I just have three ways here, there's, there's five ways to become post-secondary ready. And three of those, I feel that the CTE classes in Scott County are supporting that. So achieving three hours of dual credit or post-secondary articulated credit, so again, we're offering 20 plus classes of dual credit CTE classes. Completing a required number of hours, achieving a benchmark within apprenticeship or cooperative learning. So again, we have 84 students who are meeting post-secondary readiness through that and achieving any industry recognized certification or credential. So again, we have 447 students across the district who have earned the certification route and 239 who have earned it through the end of program. And there are some pathways where students will take both the certification and the EOP.
And the other two boxes you all are familiar with, those, those are the other two ways that you can become post-secondary readiness and one is tied to ACT and the other one is tied to our AP classes.
I think probably one of the greatest things that has happened probably in the past three, four, or five years in Scott County is that we can't just recruit eighth graders who are coming up into our high schools to take our pathway classes. So we have been doing some really neat things to introduce our pathways all the way down to the elementary level. I know Jennifer Tackett is not here, but I want to give her a lot of credit, she works as a driving possibility representative and has been a great contributor to CTE within this district by building relationships with different partners, business and industry partners across the district. Do you want me to talk about the pathway pals? So, yeah.
Yeah, I can, yeah, sure, so one of the things that Jennifer has completed since becoming our business, community and business liaison is she has actually created a curriculum and all the materials for lessons to be taught at the elementary school and all of them are aligned with all of the pathways that we have here in Scott County. So they are learning about our pathways in elementary school, it's really exciting.
At a much younger age than we were before, so. The second picture there is Seth, Seth Belts, one of his ag students. This is a farm bureau program that was put on and high school students worked with the farm bureau and then these are, those are fifth graders behind there and so our ag CTE students at Scott County served. One thing they did there was show kids how to plant flowers or to plant a garden. This student here was taking this group of fifth graders around to different, different events that were happening. But again, it's, it's us introducing these young students to some of these pathways. They get to meet the older students and we want them to be thinking about our pathways at a much earlier age. The picture on the far right there, that is at Royal Spring Middle School and obviously the feeder school to that is Scott County High School and possibly ECS. And so there were ECS pathway students and Scott County school pathway students there, they were having a career day in the fall and so we were there to kind of be able to show what some options are for students as they move up into the high school level. So both elementary, middle school, I think we're doing a really good job of introducing our younger students to the pathways, to careers and the pathways that we offer. Partnerships with local community, the chamber, post-secondary institutions is really strong. So for example, we had a career exploration day that was hosted by BCTC and the chamber and that was in March, so last month. So we had over 200 students from each of the high schools be able to, there were six panels that they could choose, they choose two of the six panels, these are career panels. It could be anything from the food industry to maybe the healthcare industry, so students choose two of those six. Were able to sit, listen to the panel and then ask questions about those careers, so that was really successful. And again, BCTC and the chamber have been great to work with. The second picture there is Scott County students back in October, which is manufacturing month. We had students from each of the high schools be able to do two different manufacturing tours on a single day and they fed them lunch and everything. And so I think this is Georgetown metal and so these students are getting to learn what they do at Georgetown metal. Again, ask questions, see what's going on and learn a little bit about that career. And the third picture there on the far right, I'm proud of that, that's our, all of our females in our engineering program at ECS. Ninth graders through 12th graders and they've gotten to partner with Toyota to do a girls' and engineering day and to kind of do a specialized tour for them at Toyota. And then on another day, they got to go to UK for girls' for engineering day at UK and be introduced to some, going to school, what that would be like at UK.
I do want to give a shout out to John with this, he and Deborah Reed and Jennifer Tackett are part of the economic and education affairs committee with the chamber and they meet with them every month and it's because of that commitment that a lot of these opportunities have come to fruition, so give you a little credit there, John.
Well, thank you, yeah, it's, it's going well. The 4T Academy, that's another great partnership, I don't know if you've all been able to get over to that, it's a house that, what is now the new Scott County Middle School, the old Scott County High School in the old ag area. This, this picture obviously is taken at Toyota, but this is a great partnership with Toyota, providing students, this is a junior class, so this was the very first year. So many of these students are returning for their senior year and we have a fresh batch, right now we have 25 students signed in to come as juniors for next year, so this program is building well. These students, these students who are juniors this year will be seniors next year, they'll take classes the first semester and then the second semester, four days a week, they'll get to work at Toyota, I think they're making, I want to say $18 an hour when they do that, their senior second semester. So it's just really a great opportunity, if they complete that program successfully, they basically have a job at Toyota. Now, that job might be working on the line and that might be kind of like, some people might be like, that's great or not so great, but that is a doorway for these students and once they have that job, the, the ability to move up through Toyota, the ability to earn an education at Toyota is strong. And what we want to continue to do is build this relationship with other industries in Scott County so that these students not only go to Toyota, but might go to any of the different manufacturers in the area. So, but this is a great model that we're following.
I'd planned on waiting till superintendent report to discuss this, but I think this sounds like a really good segue. So within the past month, Stephanie and I participated in a, in a meeting that was requested of us from Warren County Schools and Warren County's Chamber of Commerce. They had seen press releases about 4T Academy and their question is, hey, we're not trying to step on your toes here with Toyota, but they were like, we have some industry partners in our community that we would like to pull in in this same, similar way, how have you done it? So for me, the most powerful part of that was in, you know, there have been challenges. There have been challenges in how we work with the Department of Education to make this happen. Now we're, we're stacking the deck in our favor to have people that are going to advocate with us to say, hey, are there things we can do, ways we can, we can, you know, tweak regulations or law to where we can make it less difficult to sometimes provide for these opportunities, because I think that's something that, that Toyota was even surprised by, that, you know, they, again, the hardest part's finding the person and then getting that person to meet the certification standards, well, then the curriculum piece, how that all lined up. So I, I just think it, it's a super positive thing and it is something that we want to replicate with other partners in town. I think everybody is starting to see what we've been trying to share that it's not, it's not super easy, it's something that can be done, but it takes a lot of, of partnership to get that done.
And what's great about these students, a lot of these students really didn't know what they wanted to do out of high school, so we talk about those students sometimes who graduate. So we talk about those students sometimes who graduate, and they're kind of lost, you know, maybe they're going to go to Walmart or something. But here's a route for them that can lead to a lot of success.
And I will say, the work that they're doing at the Four-T aligns with the profile of the learner perfectly. You know, in December, when they did the partnership with Garth and the bikes and the Georgetown Police Department, they, one student got up and spoke, and after they were finished, I was talking to his parents, and they said that last year at this time, he would have never have gotten up in front of people and spoken. And I think that just really shows, shines through what they're doing here for our kids.
All right. CTE programs are expensive, as you guys probably know. We have been fortunate. We are in our third year of CTE supplemental funds. And so these are state funds with bipartisan support that have been coming down to CTE programs within the state.
We previously referenced them as LEVAC funds, but now they're starting to shift the calling to the CTE supplemental funds. That's why that's on there that way, just so y'all don't worry. Where's it go? They're still here.
Still here, just a different name.
Yeah, and people call it both names, so it's okay. So the way these funds are distributed is sixty percent is based just on the number of students you have registered in CTE classes, and then forty percent of the funds is based on incentives that a school can earn to get some additional funds. And so the forty percent, so sixty percent's just kind of butts in seats, and that's actually going to raise to eighty percent, I think, next year, Billy, we've heard. And the forty percent then, here are ways to earn the incentive points. So it designates it as a concentrator. That means you're a third-year CTE student within a pathway, all right? So if you sign up for your third year, you are then a concentrator. Successfully completion of an approved CTE co-op, earned approved CTE dual-credit with a grade of a C or above, and then a technical skill attainment, whether that's the CTE end of program or EOP. And so we sometimes wonder, well, how is Scott County doing? And something we sometimes do here, and you guys may have done it in past meetings, but we look at counties that have a similar makeup as Scott County. And so I sometimes call them the Big Fifteen when we want to kind of compare ourselves to similar schools. So you can see there that Scott County sits pretty well. And what that tells me is that we've got a lot of students who are taking CTE classes, and we have a lot of students who are earning some incentive points for the district, which includes then additional money.
And to that point, with regard to the Big Fifteen, when we look at the Big Fifteen, we're oftentimes down towards around ten out of the Big Fifteen. So the fact that we are fourth on this list supports that we are providing more opportunities for our kids. And on the previous point, where it talked about concentrators, you know, one thing that I know, conversations, that some districts are, sometimes will strong-arm their kids to stay in pathways so that they reach that concentrator status. We have taken that route of going with the block scheduling and going that way to where we've got students having so much opportunity in their schedule where if they stick with it and they're comfortable with it and they still are loving it, that they don't have the obstacle of, I don't have enough time in my day to make it happen. So we're not really strong-arming them to stay in, but we're, it incentivizes them to pursue it if they still have that passion because they've got time in their schedule to do it.
And I want to commend you all, I mean, that was, you know, a few years ago, but it was because you all were willing to fund those Section Seven positions, some of those that you all earmarked for specific career and technical ed pathways. And so it's because of that decision that we have been able to expand what we offer to our kids. So we thank you for that.
Yeah, and I think in addition to that, there are students who can take two different pathways within their high school. And we also have students who are doing a pathway at ECS and a pathway back at their own high school, which is wonderful. And sometimes those students sophomore year, maybe drop one and then choose the other one. And that's great, too, because we're giving students options to kind of test the waters a little bit. So I think it's been really positive. So what have we been doing with all this money that we've been getting, which we are very blessed? And again, it's promised again for next year, and then after that, we don't know. So Noah Wright at Great Crossing High School, he's been able to buy CAD workstations and...
Lizzie, Lister?
Little Lizzie. I should have brought her today.
Oh, no, that was a product.
I have a product, yes.
Yeah, well, and probably you all know about Great Crossing's kind of, their fair that happens kind of around Christmas time. A lot of those products are being made by materials that are bought with LEVAC supplemental money and also by machinery that, you know, so both the consumables and the machinery that is made can be purchased with this LEVAC money.
Because if we just had our normal Perkins money, which is around a hundred thousand dollars a year, that is not, you are not allowed to spend that on consumables. So this has been able to open up that opportunity.
Yeah, so I won't go through that whole list. I'll jump down there at the bottom where it also says also, conferences, this has been great to be able to send teachers and students to conferences. So it pays for travel, the bus, hotel rooms, we can use that money to do that. So CTSOs, those groups within, like the FFA or HOSA, those are all things that have really been able to improve because we've been able to send more kids to these conferences. Again, fabric, steel, and gas, those are really considered consumables that we would not be able to buy with Perkins money, but we are able to buy consumables with the CTE supplemental fund. So embroidery machines, infant CPR trainers, EKG machines, all kinds of state-of-the-art equipment that is kind of recognized within the industry. Our students are getting their hands on those things. You see hearts, brains, and eyeballs there.
We saw that.
Yeah, so, you know, that, so people, groups that are using that, it might be ag science, where students are able to do dissections in ag science, health science students, biomed students. So again, all expensive things that we've been able to purchase over the past couple of years, so it's been great.
This has been, again, a priority for me every time we have legislators that we welcome into our schools, making sure they see this is how we've been using the fund. Because it paints such a, I mean, it paints such a vivid picture in the difference of experiences that it makes for our students. So, and every time they welcome and come to and accept the opportunity to come to our schools, they leave seeing that it's a no-brainer. It really...
So yeah, so continue to thank any of our local legislators that serve. How do we measure ourselves? So KDE puts out some criteria for being a high-quality CTE program. So each year, we have a CTE cohort that meets several times throughout the year, and at the beginning of the year, we do this self-assessment. And it just allows a program to kind of self-assess what they're doing well and what are areas that they can continue to grow in. So it's something that we do to keep quality high. And then I just want to thank our CTE teachers. I often tell them, if I got stuck on a deserted island, I'd want my CTE teachers with me because they are an amazingly talented group and creative and stuff like that. Marissa Hancock, Kristy Collins, Cindy Brown, they do a lot of data entry into TES, which is Technical Education Data System. And so it's a lot of work, and they receive a small stipend for doing that, but I want to thank them for that. Maria Lyons, who's really not half the deal with CTE, she's a CTE counselor, but she does a whole lot of work with data collection and helping me support CTE across the district. I want to thank Jennifer Tackett. I was hoping she was going to be here. She has done a phenomenal job over the past couple of years, increasing engagement with students and community partners. And I know her job is not just to work with CTE, but it's kind of a secondary thing that has happened. If she's building partnerships with businesses and industry, it's only supporting our CTE students. And she's done great work with introducing our pathways to a younger generation. And thank you to Stephanie and Billy and the board for your continued support of CTE within the district.
I can't wait to show you what Jennifer Tackett is putting in at GMS for the career choices. It's amazing, but I'll wait till it's finished. It's in construction. It's amazing.
How many students do we have in our CTE?
Oh, is that on your person?
Yeah, it is just, it's less than four thousand, but we're in...
It was on the chart right there.
So, yeah. So at Great Crossing, one thousand six hundred and twenty-two, Scott County, fifteen hundred.
And you all know the numbers of enrollment, so that shows you, it's a large percentage of our students. And again, it's thanks to block scheduling that they, we have more students able to enroll in more pathways.
What is the number one participated program that you guys have right now?
That's a great question.
Well, that is a great question. That's a little hard to answer because you take, like, ag, they might have three ag teachers, so they're kind of a bigger program, so they might be able to take more kids. Our health sciences is very popular.
At both Great Crossing and ECS, yeah.
So I think that addition at Great Crossing was a great addition.
Family and consumer science, I'm going to go ahead and tell you. Culinary, I've got two entering into high school next year, and they both have requested back because they want to eat at school. So it's a very popular program.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
They're doing great. The new law pathway at Scott County High School has attracted some, some great students. And another pathway that didn't exist but allows students to really leave high school with some credentials to possibly get a job right out of it.
You know, we've talked about pathways, I think, since Susan and I have been on the board and creating more and more and more. So we really do appreciate all the work behind it. If you're able to share those numbers in the different programs, I would greatly appreciate it. I'd like to see what we've been working on for these past years.
And what we can probably do is provide you the pathway or the program, the number of teachers, and how many kids are in that.
Yeah.
Would that be good?
Yeah, I'd just like to take a cursory overview. I mean, we've been, like I said, we've been talking about it for years and would love to see that growth.
Yeah, well, and I would love to say, and something that John said earlier today to me, and I thought was very powerful, and he said, we went from just having a few programs at each high school, then ECS was built and we were able to expand on that. But in the last three years, and, you know, I was a principal of a high school that was also the CTE principal, and so I had to do it all. And I'm telling you, the amount of growth that we have seen in career and technical ed in this district over the last three years, I'm amazed by. It's a lot of things.
And I think what we've heard, yeah, what we've heard from the county is more, we need more trades, and that is exactly what we've added to our programs in the past couple of years.
All right. Well, thank you for all the information you gathered.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's great.
And all the work for everybody. Okay, number nine. Approved service agreement between Scott County Board of Education and Toshiba for paper cuts for the 2025-2026 school year.
Move to approve.
Got it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I was trying to find you there, Wendy, sorry. I'm going to move you just a little bit so I could see you a little bit better. Number ten. Approved agreement between Hands-on Therapy Services and Scott County Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven. Approved memorandum of agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, Education, and Labor Cabinet and Scott County Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve. Approved fees for summer care program at Southern Elementary School.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen. Approved Section Seven funding for the 2025-2026 school year.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number fourteen. Approved to ratify, create the following positions, fourteen A through fourteen G.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number fifteen. Approved the establishment of the Scott County High School bowling team booster.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number sixteen. Award request for proposal for complete audio and visual, excuse me, control system for mock courtroom at Elkhorn Crossing School. Goodness.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number seventeen. Renewal of bid for trash garbage pickup and disposal for fiscal year 2025-26.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number eighteen. Approved pledge of collateral agreement for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number nineteen. Approval of 2025 capital fund, second request.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty. Approved 2025-2026 school activity fund budgets.
Move.
Got it? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-one. Approved fiscal year 2025 financial audit contract.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-one. Approved fiscal year 2025 financial audit contract.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-two. Approved surplus items as submitted.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-three. Number twenty-four. Approved current bills.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-five. Superintendent's report.
So I'll start with the first standard, strategic leadership. And the reason I put it under strategic leadership is because we have been really pushing our schools to include their leader-in-me and profile of a learner in what they're doing every day at their schools. And there are events happening at our schools across the district, student presentations. For instance, Scott County Middle School tonight has student presentations going on as we speak from their students connected to how they're able to demonstrate aspects of their, being a profile, their profile of a learner. Second, instructional leadership, this one's a little bit different. It could kind of fit with profile of a learner as well, especially regarding communication. But specifically, Garth's fifth-grade students, they completed gateway projects tied to the Constitution. I was able to participate in that and got to see a good old friend, Glenn Manns, who was part of OVEC, and he was a big, big piece of the Teaching American History grant, the tag grants that they used to do through OVEC. And he was a part of the project. It was, it was a great event, and the fifth-grade classrooms at Garth, I had a chance to be in Ms. Lacasco's classroom, and they did a phenomenal job. She had them really well-prepared for the event. I already talked about the Four-T Academy discussion with Warren County, human resources leadership. We finished allocation meetings, managerial leadership. In a very short order, we were able to complete and close up the circle and the loop on the SRO agreement with the county. The City of Stampin' Ground, I met with some of their commissioners this morning, and we discussed SRO there. I believe that they have some upcoming meetings in which they're going to discuss some things, and then we will perhaps discuss some things after that. So I'll let them, let them hash that out. We did have a school nutrition audit that was conducted with an outside group that was kind of commissioned by KDE, and we had a few action items to work on, but many of them really kind of were technicalities because they should have been off of the, off of the audit because we'd already submitted the data, but we submitted it in this box instead of this folder. And so nothing from that that we are super concerned about. We're just, we're going to do the few things that we need to do to be compliant with them. And then Oxford Elementary, Tony talked about the pre-construction meeting, and then then Oxford Elementary, Tony talked about the preconstruction meeting. And then the bond sale I had shared with you all, but just to share with the general public, you know, when we had our special called meeting on the 14th, Chip and Kelly met with us and they said, look, you know, hey, the the environment's a little bit, little bit turbulent, little up, little volatile, little up and down. They weren't really sure what we would expect. Union County Schools had sold bonds a few days before that meeting at a rate of 5.41%. We were very pleased that on Wednesday, we had nine bidders, and we sold our bonds for 4.352323%. So very pleased with the rate that we got there, very pleased with the amount of bids that we got. And then we came to find out on the backside that the the winning bidder did not take advantage of the entire bond discount available to them. So when we build, when they build the the bond structure as it's to be sold, they build in the, I don't want to say worst case scenario, but the scenario for us where they would take the maximum discount. Where they didn't take the maximum discount and our bonds were purchased at a premium, it ended up saving the district $1.28 million over the over the over the bond sale issue. So we were able to lower that amount. I mean, me and Gina, just every every time we we on Wednesday, we were talking to her on a Zoom with with them. And then after the Zoom, they called back. And it's like, I mean, this is just, you know, knock on wood, we had some good luck the past few days. So that was really, really positive information. Boy Scouts of America, I met with their senior executive director, Sophia, I'm gonna butcher her last name, starts with a G, and I'm not even gonna try it. But anyway, met with her. They are revamping some of the things that they're doing. And one of the things that that they're kind of focused on is how they can work in career and technical education essentially with schools. So I have a meeting tomorrow with Jennifer Tackett to connect her with with their executive director to see if there might be ways, because Jennifer Tackett does a phenomenal job of saying, okay, this is what they offer, this is what we need, here's a way to to make that marriage work. So I'm hopeful that that she'll be able to to hash some some really cool things out of that. Under Standard 7, so I am participating in the superintendent mentor program, I guess, for new superintendents. And my mentee came and brought his chief financial officer. And this was a few weeks back. And me and Gina got to sit down with with them for a few hours and just talk through all sorts of things. It was it was actually beneficial for both sides. And then feels like forever ago, but it was within the past, the past 34, 35 days, attended the last of the legislative education subcommittees for the House and the Senate before the session, the session closed. With regard to legislation, there are probably, you know, again, I talked to you all about House Bill 694, and I'm not going to rehash that. But but as far as actual action items that we might want to think about on the horizon, one, the cell phone policy bill. Essentially, we will develop a policy that says, hey, schools, you have to have a site based policy that addresses X, Y, and Z. You know, we'll we'll do that. And and we were, I know from conversations we had had, we were probably going down that path, even if we didn't have a law that told us we needed to do that. The other, the other thing that comes to mind is the traceable communications bill. I want to say it's Senate Bill 181, but I might be wrong. That one is one where school districts are responsible for creating a a communication system in which all communications between employees, which would be teachers, but it could also be coaches, sponsors, whatever, and students are traceable. So like as a, for instance, right now, like on Brenna plays softball for Great Crossing High School, they have text groups with the coach and the seniors, the coach and all the players, the coach and the JV, just to communicate basic things that wouldn't be permitted. So we are looking at different things. Renee participated in a meeting today with a with a vendor, I think. Is that accurate to say? Yeah. And then Maria did as well. I wasn't aware of that. But I'd already talked to Maria a few days prior and have charged her with with making sure that, you know, she's talking to her people. Because I know a few counties are looking at a particular platform. The thing that I did like about what the legislators did with this is originally, they were saying one platform. In the end, they said, you just need to have one plan or one system. But if you choose to use multiple, multiple platforms, that's okay. And that was the because that was the part on the logistical end on our side, we were like, well, wait a minute, you know, maybe that works for coaches, but that might not work for our classroom teachers. So we might need multiples. I think everybody's hoping to find one platform so that there can be some unity across across their district. But that's one that for sure, we're already working on because we can't, I don't believe we have the time to waste, to wait for KSBA or whoever else to come out and and share with us some recommendations. Let's see, in the last one, was the last, oh, the last one would would pertain to kindergarten and first graders. There is there are standards that they have to meet moving forward. And if they don't, then you can you can give them a pass from kindergarten to first grade. But then that first grade year, if they're not meeting the standards, it is required that they are held back or retained. My my concern, given an extra year, excuse me, given an extra year in primary, my concern, one of my concerns with this is that we are creating another obstacle and another roadblock where parents that we might want in our system, because they are supportive of our schools, they're supportive of our of our of our of their students, may decide because of this, okay, I'm gonna go homeschool, or I'm gonna go private school because they won't have those same requirements on them that 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 we may have on this matter. So I'm a little bit worried about unintended consequences with that. I've also been, as Becky knows, assistant principal at a school that we had preschool kindergarten and first graders. And there was a year in which we were very, we were, we were very stout on our stance with students giving extra years. And I've seen, when I came back to the district as a principal of those students as fifth graders, some of the unintended consequences that can come with a bill such as this. So, you know, we'll we'll handle it. I did want you to have that on your on your radars. But those, for me, those are kind of the top three bills that out of the session that we really need to be to be thinking about. And then the last thing I'll mention is, our next meeting was originally scheduled for the 29th. I think I've mentioned that we want to look at maybe the 22nd, if we could. So maybe after the meeting, we can discuss that if it pleases you, Madam Chair. And that's supposed to be superintendent's report.
Yeah, you got it in there. Yeah. Thank you, Billy. I'd like to jump off with board comments, if you don't mind. I just want to say that I had the pleasure along with Eleanor to participate with the GMS. Shane is in the back of the room. Great program that was set up over the past, you know, of course, Stephanie and a lot of people were involved. Just a program, just to see what we could do with helping out our students at GMS. And it's a great leadership academy and very exciting. A lot of community members came to join. I think what touched me the most were the students that were involved. I mean, we just got raw information there. And it was really excited to see how excited they were and some of their responses. It was really just pretty neat. And so I I really did enjoy that a lot. So thank you and and good luck in in creating that program in the upcoming, in the upcoming years. I also want to mention that I I'm part of a government affairs meeting once a month, and Stephanie joins us as well. Everybody was very, very appreciative of the fact that we have storm shelters. And, you know, while we're building our schools and and, you know, it was mandated that we had to do it from Great Crossing to Scott County, it really does help. And it's in a section of the county that really can use help. And then I also reminded Joe Pat that, you know, coming soon, we're gonna have Oxford Elementary. And then with all the growth, who knows where else we're gonna pop up. But, you know, he has to comb his budget as well to see what else he can do to try to protect, you know, the community as well. And and I'm very, very proud of that. I'm very proud that we have that facility that's available for our students and our staff and the community. So I just wanted just to say kudos to everybody. That was just, that was wonderful. So that's all I have to say. Wendy, do you want to, I'll I'll have you jump in. Do you have anything you'd like to talk about? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yep.
Okay. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come on Zoom. You know, I take my, I take my my role as a board member very serious, even though I had a passing in the family. But I just wanted to be a part and show that how much I support my community. So thank you very much. I do want to also suggest Talking Points for an app, because as a teacher, I use it all the time. So if you could just write that down, I can give you information about Talking Points. It's a great way to communicate with families. I've used it for the last four years. And for the last four years, I've had 100% parent participation and a communication with my parents for any type of, you know, meetings or parent conferences. So that's a, that's a great program, Talking Points. But thank you so much for allowing me to be on Zoom today.
All right. Thank you. Take care. Susan?
Want to say good back on the table. And I appreciate the grace of blessing. Proud of our world.
All right. Thank you. Eleanor?
Flowers. Front of plenty. Flowers. No, she didn't. I had the privilege on Monday evening to attend a boarding meeting that I'm of, in our meeting, Scott County High School, the Horticulture Department, and with a visit to campus. And Mr. Feld was a teacher and wonderful. And off at four of his students that, they showed us how to make arrangements. As I talked to them, they were so enthusiastic about, in fact, they were going on Tuesday, Tuesday to accompany students. And they're so excited that it's just everything that has been said tonight feeds right into students. And this is the one that I wish I could say, I made it. I had big help, 85, 90% of the help one of the students. And I got to talk, well, I talked to all four of them, and they were just terrific. The few, I feel like I visited a classroom of students. And it was wonderful. I absolutely, I just, I told Mr. Feld, thanked him. And I think he felt really good about having outside organizations. So that's the first thing. And the second is very personal to me. Five years ago, I lost my precious Carol to mitral valve prolapse at heart. And since then, the American Heart Association established Carol Barr Scholarship is for those interested in stem. So we usually, we have the application process, many students apply. Or they, they choose four students, a senior. They are STEM. At the meeting. And students that have been chosen 2021 have been from other counties other than Scott County. I don't know whether, there is an advisory board, I am not a part of. But anyway, I received a phone call a couple weeks ago. And two of our students, the, the scholarships for Carol Barr. Them. Anyway, students will receive $10,000, as I said. One of those students is from Scott County High School. One is from Great Crossing. And one of the reasons that I received that phone call, one student that received it, her name is Haytown, Brenda Parker. So, so I, we had tears when I talked to her. So anyway, I am absolutely thrilled. I do not know the students from Scott County High School, but I asked Billy if Brenna was excited. Anyway, I just, it's just wonderful, the students we have are just making me so proud of Scott County. Congratulations. As a parent.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you. That's really neat.
Okay, speaking of sororities and scholarships, Eleanor, I'll segue right into something exciting, I think. Three of us, Eleanor, Wendy, and I, all belong to PEO, which is Philanthropic Education Organization. It is an international, because we are also in Canada, organization that we do many things. But one of the things we do, and the reason we were formed, is to find excellent young women who have a lot of potential, who just need some help with going into the next phase of their education. And we give out, one of the scholarships we give out is called the STAR Scholarship. And it is for a senior high school young woman who has excelled across the board and has great potential. And we want to help her with the next phase of her career. We submit names, names are submitted from all over the nation to a national board that makes these decisions. Our STAR student this year that we submitted a nomination for is Ellen Muller. We've just found out, she is a senior at Scott County High School. We've just found out Ellen has won this $2,500 reward. And so we're very excited for that scholarship as well. And this wonderful young woman who can use this toward her UK college experience.
Thank you for sharing, everybody. Okay, number 27, move to closed session pursuant to KRS 61.8101F to conduct student discipline proceedings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
We'll just stay here.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. Okay.
I'm comfortable, but it's a little chilly.